Good evening, everyone, trustees and members of the public who are in attendance also. And I will call the meeting to order. Boom, boom, boom. Okay, we're ready. So I will start with the electronic meeting script. My monthly dramatic reading while I try to make contact with everyone as I know, I'm just gonna read it. Okay. "To conduct this meeting wholly electronically and to effectuate both the emergency procedures authorized by FOIA and the emergency ordinance, this library board of trustees needs to make certain findings and determinations for the record." "Audibility of members' voices first, because each member of this library board of trustees is participating in this meeting from a separate location, we must verify that a quorum of members is participating, and that each member's voice is clear, audible, and at an appropriate volume for all of the other members. Accordingly, I am going to conduct a roll call and ask each library board member participating in this meeting to state your name and the location from which you are participating. I ask that each of you pay close attention to ensure that you can hear each of your colleagues. Following this roll call, we will vote to establish that every member can hear every other member." So I will start with Braddock District.
Braddock District, Brian Engler, I'm at home in Brook, Virginia.
Providence District, Miriam.
Miriam Small in Providence District, I'm at home in Fairfax.
At Large, Jane.
Jane Miscavige, at large, I'm at home in Vienna.
City of Fairfax, Suzanne. Unmute your...
I did. I'm Suzanne Levy, and I'm appearing from my home office in Fairfax City, Virginia.
Drainsville, Sujatha.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sujatha Hampton. I am participating from Drainsville, from Great Falls, in my home.
Hunter Mill, Sheila.
Sheila Janica for Hunter Mill District, and I am in my home in Reston, Virginia.
Lee District, Keith.
This is Keith Fox, representing Lee District, and I'm here in my home in Springfield.
Mount Vernon, Gary.
Gary Russell, at my home in Mount Vernon.
School Board, Priscilla.
Good evening, Priscilla Dando, at my home in Woodbridge, representing the school board.
Springfield District, Phil.
Phil Rosenthal, in my house in Fairfax Station, Virginia.
You and Sully District is not represented tonight, and I am representing Mason District, Fran Milhouser, from my home in Falls Church. At this point, I will pass the virtual gavel to the vice chair, Jane Miscavige, so that I may be heard to make the requisite motion. And she's got it. I move that each member's voice may be adequately heard by each other member of this library board of trustees.
I second the motion. Brian.
Thank you, Brian, for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Second, having established that each member's voice may be heard by every other member, we must next establish the nature of the emergency that compels these emergency procedures, the fact that we are meeting electronically, what type of electronic communication is being used, and how we have arranged for public access to this meeting. Therefore, I move that the state of emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic makes it unsafe for this board to physically assemble and unsafe for the public to physically attend any such meeting, and that as such, FOIA's usual procedures, which require the physical assembly of this board and the physical presence of the public, cannot be implemented safely or practically. I further move that this board may conduct this meeting electronically through a dedicated Zoom meeting, and that the public may access this meeting by joining from their home computers.
I second. Phil.
Phil seconds. All those in favor say aye.
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 So moved.
Finally, it is next required that all of the matters addressed on today's agenda must address the emergency itself, are necessary for continuity in Fairfax County government, and/or are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations and the discharge of this board's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities.
Is there a second?
I second, Phil.
Thank you, Phil. All those in favor say aye.
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 So moved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public comments. "The library board wishes to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on library-related issues. It is our policy to hear a maximum of five speakers at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are limited to one public comment during a six-month period. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes for their comments. A 30-second warning will be given before each speaker's time is up, and the speaker will be expected to end promptly when time is called. Speakers are requested to pre-register with the library director. However, if there are available public comment slots open at the time of a board meeting, the remaining slots may be filled by individuals registering at the meeting. Board members will not question or respond to speakers. Tonight, there are no registered speakers." Okay, right. If anyone wishes to speak at a future meeting, please call the director's office at 703-324-8324. That's done. So next, it's my pleasure to introduce our presentation on the fiscal year 2022 advertised budget. And from the Department of Management and Budget, we have Phil Hagan, and I believe that Dana Thompson was not able to make it. I don't see that she's here yet, so. So Phil, it's your show. You're on.
I am just trying to... All right, did the presentation show for everybody?
All right.
So what we have for you tonight is just a condensed slide deck that we've adapted from the county executive's presentation. You can find the full slide deck online at fairfaxcounty.gov/budget. We also have some other resources online as well, like the Citizens Guide, which is what we would usually bring to these meetings when we have these in person. We also have the advertised budget summary online, which is just a fantastic summary of every funding adjustment that we've included in the budget. So when we developed this budget, we felt that it was important to maintain our conservative budget posture. We're hopeful that many of our revenue categories are going to rebound in FY '22, but there's still a lot of uncertainty regarding the timing and the breadth of that recovery. And as you'll see on later slides, the strong residential real estate market is the primary reason why we're able to make some investments in county priorities next year. But for many of our other revenue categories, our FY '22 projections are still below last year's actuals. This proposal, when we developed the advertised budget, did not assume any additional stimulus funds. Now that we've received the, or rather, now that the American Rescue Plan has passed, we're anticipating that we'll receive, we believe it'll be $222 million from that next round of federal aid, and so we'll be looking towards ways to put that to good use. I'd note with that money, we received, it was just over $200 million around this time last year. The American Rescue Plan, we're expecting that to come in in two tranches of about $111 million each. The first one coming in probably in early May, and the second coming in about a year later. So the advertised budget plan is balanced based on a real estate tax rate of $1.14, which is a one-cent decrease from the current rate. And even with that decrease, the average tax bill will increase by about $224. Last week, or last month, really, the board supervisors opted to advertise the current tax rate of $1.15. And so that sets the ceiling for what the tax rate can be adopted at in May. The board can reduce the tax rate from that $1.15, but they can't increase above it without first advertising a higher rate. So dispersment growth for both county and schools in the advertised budget is just 0.55%. And our largest single investment in this budget is for schools, but the school operating increase of $14 million is far short of what the school board requested, which was $104 million. That school board request included a 3% compensation increase for all of their employees. That would have been partially funded by the state, but the lion's share of that funding would have had to come from local funds, a total of over $60 million in county funding. Employee compensation continues to be a priority, both for teachers and for county employees, but we simply didn't have the resources available to fund compensation adjustments in the advertised budget plan. Certainly, as the board of supervisors is deliberating on the budget, and with the testimony that they've been hearing yesterday, today, and tomorrow, I think compensation continues to be on their minds. Not part of the '22 advertised budget, but we did just release our '21 third quarter. And part of that recommendation was to include a $1,000 bonus, a one-time bonus for county employees. And so we do continue to take a look at employee compensation, and considering the fiscal constraints that we're in, we are trying to figure out ways to do something for our employees. So also, one of the actions that has really helped us cope with revenue losses and unplanned expenses during this past year was that we established a general fund pandemic reserve about a year ago, towards the end of FY '20. So looking ahead to 2022, we've similarly recommended the establishment of an unappropriated $20 million economic recovery reserve, which would give us flexibility to support economic recovery efforts in the county over the coming year as we continue to try to navigate out of the impacts of the pandemic. And then looking at county programs, we've included some modest investments in a number of programs. It's a total of 109 new positions, and I'll touch on what those are in a few slides. So as many of you might recall, a significant amount of work went into developing the draft countywide strategic plan that was presented to the board last year before the pandemic really threw a wrench in the timeline for its adoption. The intent had been last year that when we released the draft plan, that the board would consider it alongside the budget, and ideally adopted at the same time as the '21 adopted budget last year. So a new draft plan has been released concurrent with the budget this year, with updates that take into account some of the significant cultural and societal changes that have occurred over the past year. The, a lot of the basic structure of the plan is the same. Really, what we've seen is a change in a lot of the context surrounding the plan. We're working towards adoption of the strategic plan, which will happen later this year after some additional community engagement and board discussion. So this slide shows our annual change in general fund revenue. And because there's still significant uncertainty around the economic recovery, the FY '22 forecast includes a conservative estimate of 1.5% growth over FY '21. The orange bars on this chart represent the impact of the one-time stimulus funding of $200 million that we received in FY '20. And I would also note that this chart, as yet, does not show the anticipated money that we're expecting to get as part of that American Rescue Plan, which would end up being, again, a bump in '21 and another bump in '22. So this slide provides some detail on the real estate tax base. In the FY '22 column in the bottom right, the real estate total is projected to increase by 2.88%. And this level of growth is slower than we've experienced in recent years, and there's a stark difference this year between residential and non-residential trends. Commercial real estate experienced a decline of more than 4% due to increases in vacancy and overall market risk. And this is the first decline in non-residential in five years. Some property types, like hotel, retail, restaurant, and senior care, were hit harder than others. Meanwhile, residential properties increased 4.25% due to record-low interest rates and low inventory. And it's really that disparity between residential properties increasing in value while non-residential has decreased, where we're really seeing that impact on the residential homeowner this year. So this slide is a high-level summary of the budget. And as you can see at the top, our revenue growth after that one-cent decrease in the real estate tax rate gives us just over $42 million for both county and schools. And as we've done in prior years, we built this budget, assuming equal county and schools growth, which is just 0.55%. Our dispersment increases are categorized by priority around this slide. And I'll try to be very brief as I run through the list and just hit the larger adjustments in each category, but we do have all of our numbers on this slide, so it's going to be a few minutes on this one. So county compensation, which includes pay and benefits, has a net decrease. And as I mentioned earlier, we have not included employee pay adjustments in the budget. But in benefits, we've seen increased funding requirements for the retirement systems due to some of the investment losses that we experienced early in the pandemic. But those are more than offset by some savings in some other areas, resulting in that net decrease. The savings, one of the biggest areas that we've seen savings is in our health insurance plans, where we continue to have migration into our lower-cost plans. This year is well triggered by the closure of our highest cost plan, the Cigna co-pay plan. And with that closure, both the county, with the employer's share of premiums, is seeing savings, but also the employees who are in those plans are benefiting from lower premiums that they have to pay out of pocket as well. County debt service has a slight increase, which reflects some planned bond sales and savings from recent refundings. And then lifelong education and learning has a slight decrease on the county side, and that's due to a change in the calculation of our contribution to the Northern Virginia Community College. On the school side, that $13 million includes the $14 million increase for school operating, which is offset by some small savings in school debt service. So going down the line, safety and security, $12 million includes baseline support for the body-worn camera program and staffing for the new South County Police Station and the Scotts Run Fire Station, and also staffing for the Office of Commonwealth's Attorney. The majority of the adjustments in health and environment is baseline funding for the health department positions that were added at quarterly reviews. We've been supporting those health department positions with our stimulus funds, but we do need to put in baseline county funds in order to support them going forward. There are also new positions and funding for the opioid task force that are included in that health and environment line item, as well as new positions and funding for the diversion first program. And then empowerment and support for residents facing vulnerability includes baseline funding for positions in the coordinated services planning unit to support call volume to the county's 222 line, which were added at carryover and also were initially funded with stimulus funds. Effective and efficient government, $2.5 million. It includes funding in positions for collective bargaining as we work through that change in Virginia law that does give our employees the opportunity to engage in collective bargaining. Also, funding for new facility maintenance and lease adjustments, some support for our Office of Elections, and then also some support for capital project workloads. In cultural and recreational opportunities, that primarily includes adjustments related to two new facilities, which are the Lee and Sully Community Centers. And then we have very small investments included in housing and neighborhood livability and economic opportunity. Those are two areas, though, where we have really been able to use some stimulus funds, including providing rental assistance to individuals' need. And we were also, through our RISE program, able to make grants to nonprofits and small businesses. We haven't included any funding in mobility and transportation. We benefited from stimulus funds flowing through Womata this year, which offset our metro subsidy, and we're anticipating a similar offset in FY '22 to help us out there. And then that savings line at the bottom, it includes $6 million in savings in agencies. And then it also includes the recurring balance of $10 million in the general fund pandemic reserve that shows up here since our general fund pandemic reserve in FY '21 is appropriated. Really, that $10 million is just moving into that unappropriated reserve next year. It's part of that $20 million that we will have for the board to decide what to do with next year as we move into recovery mode. So looking ahead, we'll continue to monitor our revenue categories. And for one, later this week, actually, we'll be sending to the board our add-on package, which would include any necessary adjustments that we see on the revenue side. We're also going to continue to maximize our use of stimulus funds. Certainly, with the American Rescue Plan in place, that's going to open up some new avenues for things that we can do, both in the county and the community. Those funds, thankfully, they're not as restrictive as the funds that we receive through the coronavirus relief fund. So that's going to be a major area that we look to over the coming years. Looking ahead to FY '23, we're certainly hopeful that we'll have a much more positive budget year as the economy improves. We're still expecting to face some challenges, though, due to just all of our competing demands. So this slide, we've listed a number of ways to provide input on the budget. Public hearings are going on right now. Today was the second of three days, but there's still tomorrow. As we were talking about before the meeting started, there isn't an option this year for in-person testimony. I'm certainly hoping that next year we'll be able to get back to normal with that. But we do have options available for residents to testify either by phone or video, just like we did last year, and that does seem to be going well. And then my last slide in this deck is our budget timeline. As I said, we're right now in the middle of public hearings. Our next key date is going to be April 27, which is when the board marks up the FY '22 budget. And by markup, that's when the board goes through and makes the adjustments to the advertised budget that they'd like to see in place for adoption. Also, on that date, they will approve our capital improvement program, as well as the third quarter review. And then May 4 is the formal adoption of the budget. I would say, though, usually, most of the work is really done on markup on April 27, since that really is when they're going through and making edits to the budget. So that is the end of my slide deck. And I don't think Dana has joined us. Dana was going to provide a little bit of context on the library budget in particular. There's honestly not too much in the way of change with the library budget. This year, as well as last year, have been very modest years with changes overall. Usually, one of the biggest areas that we'd see with change in the library budget would be on the compensation side, and with nothing in there right now, it's something that we don't have. So overall, the library budget is pretty flat. One of the things that has taken place, so as we're working on the budget each year, we're constantly working on two years of budgets. We have the current-year budget, the FY '21 budget that we're operating under right now, and then the future-year budget, the '22 budget, which was the presentation that I just went through, the budget that we're developing that we're going to be starting. So as I said earlier, we did just finish the FY '21 third-quarter review, which is our last chance to make changes to the current-year budget before the end of the fiscal year. So as part of the third-quarter review, the two things that are in there that would impact the libraries, for one, in order to make any changes in the third-quarter review, most of our changes were actually supported by areas where we identified flexibility within agency budgets. And so we had reductions in a number of agencies, just one-time reductions that only impacted the current fiscal year. And so libraries, there was a $500,000 reduction there. And then the other change, which I mentioned, was the recommendation to put in a one-time bonus for county employees. It would be $1,000 for merit employees and $500 for non-merit employees. Certainly, as the board is taking a look at third quarter and those recommendations, they have the opportunity to make a decision about that particular item as to whether that's the appropriate amount, whether the criteria that we recommended are the appropriate criteria. So we'll have to kind of sit tight and see what the board decides on that. So I think that's all I have. If y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to try to help you out.
Okay, I'm interested in the bonus and the, will the issue of like part-time and full-time be a pro-rate or not?
So the criteria that we laid out made a distinction just based on merit employees, those who are part of our retirement systems versus non-merit employees. And so what we recommended there was a flat amount of $1,000 for merit employees, $500 for non-merit employees. We didn't recommend any kind of proliferation based on hours. We know there are differences, certainly, of, we have non-merit employees on all sorts of schedules, but our recommendation was to do those flat-dollar amounts. Those would be for employees, the criteria as well, where the employees had to be on payroll by January 1, and then they would also have to be active on our payroll at the time that that bonus is paid out. Especially when we look at non-merit employees, we know that there are situations where employees work very infrequently for some departments. It may only be, you know,
Seasonal.
One, three, a few months, or yeah, it might be seasonal. And there are situations where employees are not taken off of, they're not getting paid, but they're not like taken out of the system. And so, you know, that criteria is just to make sure that we are hitting those employees who are currently still active.
Any other questions from any trustees?
Sujatha has her hand up.
Okay.
Am I mishearing you? Are you saying married employees or?
Merit.
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 Can't possibly be, but I wasn't. I don't know what a merit employee is. Can you tell me what that is?
So the merit system is the employees who are part of our civil service system, where it requires a competitive process in order to be hired. Those are the employees, then, who, having gone through that competitive process, are part of our retirement systems. Non-merit employees, we have two basic categories of non-merit employees, in that we have either, we can consider them temporary employees, employees who are scheduled to work. I believe that the cap on hours is 900 hours per year, whereas a full-time job of 40 hours per week would be 2,080. The temporary employees, we typically prefer to be the things that you really would consider to be, my dog's going to go crazy now. But they are the things that we would prefer to see as the kind of seasonal employment of lifeguards, would be one example. We certainly do have lifeguards at some indoor pools that are open for, you know, I think even all year. But then, you know, some of the others, they are the seasonal kind of jobs. The next category up is our non-merit benefits eligible, which are employees who are working enough hours to where, at least under the Affordable Care Act, we're required to provide them with health benefits as well. And so those are employees that we typically expect to be working the majority of the year. They're limited to 1,500, 60 hours. With all those with non-merit employees, while there may be a competitive process to hire them, there aren't the same stringent requirements of, it is certainly possible that if, you know, somebody submits their resume, they could get a job that way as opposed to through a competitive process with those.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I can share that for the library, most of our employees are merit staff, and that our non-merit staff are our library pages, the folks that show books. And those would fall into the first category that Phil mentioned.
Anyone else have any details they're interested in finding out about? This is a good opportunity. Okay, well, Phil, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure, usually coming out, but participating this way, too. So I'll look forward to seeing you all next year.
Okay, take care.
Thanks, Phil.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve them?
I move we approve, Phil.
Thank you. Miriam, second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes have passed. I'll accept it. Thank you. Next is my report. So I'm starting, I'm all about committees tonight. So tonight, we will be, I am appointing the nominating committee, and Gary Russell and Keith Fox will be in charge of the nomination. So the schedule for the elections, I'm just going to run through it briefly so everybody's familiar with it. So at the April meeting, the chair appoints two trustees to establish a slate of officers of chair, vice chair, and representative to the Fairfax Library Foundation Board. And neither the chair nor the vice chair shall be eligible to be on that committee. Then next month at the May meeting, the nominating committee shall report its recommended slate of officers. Now, right now, any trustee who's interested in running for one of those offices can submit your name to the nominating committee. So you can let Gary and Keith know that you want to run for something. And the other thing is that if they if they call you and you say, no, you don't want to run for something, they can't put your name on the slate. Okay, so you have to approve. All of a sudden, you won't walk and say, hey, my name is Alvinella. Wow, okay. And then at the May meeting, if you, between now and then, have decided that you would like to run for something, you may nominate yourself or you can you can or anyone can nominate anyone else. But of course, then that person has to agree to it. And that so that's at the May meeting as well as at the June meeting. So right, pretty much right up into the last minute, there's flexibility. But so any questions on the process, how how it works? Okay, well, Gary and Keith, thank you very much for agreeing to serve. Now I have two ad hoc committees. The first one is an ad hoc committee to examine our issue of library fines. Sujatha is going to be leading that committee. And the members of the committee will be Jane Mischevich, Suzanne Levy, and Liz Walker. And some of the charges to that committee will be to review trends in library fines at other public libraries, see what's going on in the library, public library world, assess if eliminating any or part of the fines would bring about positive changes in our usership. So, you know, we have had discussions at meetings about eliminating fines on children's books. So, you know, would we want to look at that, like some sort of specific part of fines rather than just say a blanket, no more fines? Then if the committee recommends changes and the board is in agreement with that, they would develop an advocacy plan for a budget amendment recommendation. And so that's going to be, that's the fines committee. So thank you for agreeing to serve on that. The other one is ebook advocacy. And Gary will be leading this committee and members will include Priscilla, Sheila, and Keith. And as of this moment, I'm pretty sure this committee will be joint with the foundation because the direct, some of the directors of the foundation board have brought up the issue of what's going on with ebooks, basically. So they're very interested in this as are other library systems in the region. So Miriam had her hand up there.
So if we're not assigned to a committee, can we join a committee?
Well, I don't see why not.
I understand you can always attend the meeting. And while you're at the meeting, you can vote because so for all intents and purposes, I guess you'd be a member. Unless they don't tell you when the meeting is.
Well, you know.
That'll be public. You know, what occurs to me, Miriam, too, is that you're you are a director in your own right on the foundation. So you might mention to Lisa that you, you know, as a representative of the foundation, you'd bring a lot of, you know, library trustee knowledge as well as foundation too. So that'd be, that would be, I think that might be a really good thing to do, just saying. Okay. So this committee, I think it's going to be really, really important. I mean, the fines too, but this one is, you know, it's sort of on technology, cutting edge almost, if you will, in terms of reviewing trends in library, lending for ebooks and physical books of the comparison. And then look at barriers barriers to public use usage that are created through prices, pricing, licensing, and just all the things that different publishers, you know, sort of at the drop of a hat will do. Review, review and assess other state and national advocacy, including legislative measures, which other entities are promoting. And identify if F C P L needs to move forward with a defined advocacy initiative, potentially recommend a legislative item to the county for the twenty twenty-two session in Richmond. So a lot of these are, you know, really substantive committees with a lot of work. So I appreciate those of you who agreed to be on them. I was on the phone a lot over the last two weeks. It was great. Any other questions about this? And and in line with Miriam's question, and I'm always reminding everybody that committee meetings are open to the public and any trustee can attend and participate and vote. So you can be a part like that. Okay, anything else? All right. And now committee reports. So Suzanne, is there anything from the foundation?
Very briefly, the foundation is recruiting new board members. There is going to be a cinema program at the Chantilly Library on the eighth of May, and it's what I think the first Harry Potter movie. I'm not sure. Which will which will be a fundraiser for the foundation. And they've invited the presidents of the different friends groups to set up a table and sell used books should they choose to. And finally, Monday night, I attended training for the foundation board on how to contact people to get them to donate money. And we got to actually contact people Monday night. We chose our own. Miriam was a great leader in this process. I'll report, Miriam, that I haven't heard back from anyone I contacted yet, but maybe maybe some money will go into the coffers. And, you know, if you haven't made your annual donation yet, you may think about making a donation to the to the Fairfax Library Foundation. And drop me an email and I'll send you the links on how to do that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Suzanne. Miriam, any report on the finance committee?
No, we didn't. We did not have another meeting, but you just heard the budget. And Fran, you'll have to let us know how your your recorded testimony goes. Thank you for making our case. Making our case for this year. Hopefully, next year, we'll be in a position, the whole board of trustees will be in a position to take up the banner again, moving towards consistent hours like we did last year.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. It's not going to be live because it's, you know, it's it's you. You get nervous getting ready. But then when you're there, you can look around and you can see, are they? Do I have them? Are they engaged? What else should I say? Something startling? I know, maybe it was at Library Week when I I ended my presentation with the statistic that more people went to public libraries and to McDonald's. And they all really woke up for that. You know, it's like, oh, wow, okay. And I'm like, yeah, okay. Outreach, Brian?
Nothing except to announce again that the next meeting of our committee is Monday, May seventeenth. At two P M. We invite everybody who wants to come and talk about outreach. And I am hoping by then, maybe there'll be announcements that we can make.
Okay, thank you. Policy Committee, Sheila.
Okay, yes, we had our last meeting on February the twenty-eighth, and we reviewed the bylaws again, which the board will be voting on tonight, discussing. And just a little recap of the bylaws. We basically have clarified a lot of the language, clarified the roles in the election nomination procedures. And I think the only, not a big change, but the only change we have is that we've made the representative to the library board an elected position, not a not just not appointed by the chair. And then we added a language for online storage of the meeting notes or in our emergency meeting. So I know that everybody has studied it and ready to discuss and vote on it tonight. But so that's, that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. Directors' Report.
Thank you. Before I start, just if anyone is interested, the first book of the ad hoc ebook advocacy committee is scheduled for next week, Wednesday, April twenty-first at two thirty. And I'll be happy to to send around the the calendar invite as well, folks would like. So we have lots of things going on, as as you all are well aware. I want to make sure that Jane is fully prepared for her introductory comments at the Kristin Hannah event next week. We are currently up to two thousand two hundred and thirty-seven registered. Who knows if they'll all show up? But that is, I believe, our largest event ever because we can't actually fit that many people into any of the venues that we have. So virtual has been a boon for us as we look at online programming for adults. Agreed. No pressure, Jane. No. Don't worry about it. Going to be great. They're all going to be chomping at the bit for Ms. Hannah. So that one is definitely ramping up pretty quick. I saw the last list of holds on the book. The ebook has over eighteen hundred holds on it right now as well. So it's just busy time for the new one, the forwards. We also just wrapped up our Read Away Your Fines program, which ran concurrent with National Library Week. And this year, we waived three thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars in fines. And this was a dollar for every fifteen minutes that someone read. So I'm not going to try and do the math at almost eight P M., but it was a lot of minutes read to to get that amount wiped off people's cards. And I can tell you that they are all very excited to both have read and have those fines wiped off because Bobby's already getting queries about making sure that they are eliminated from accounts. I think the last one she got was for a dollar fifty. So it's happening. People are engaged around it. I sent you all an update about our Ignite Small Business Ignition Program that's being cosponsored by the town of Vienna and the Vienna Economic Development Authority. And their first session earlier this weekend went really, really well. They had forty-four people signed up. And although it's cosponsored by the town of Vienna, it's open to anyone in Fairfax County, Fairfax City, town of Vienna, town of all that kind of stuff. And I was really particularly pleased to see that we had a really strong showing of participants who identified as small businesses that were owned or to be owned by women or minority groups, which is a wonderful thing for us to be able to support in our communities. And the facilitator on our staff side reported that the amount of people that they had at the start of the Zoom session is the same amount of people that they had at the end of the Zoom session. So no one bailed late, bailed anywhere in there, which means they're engaged and participating. And the end of all the sessions is focused on networking so that these potential and developing small business owners can really kind of start to build that network and get to know other people who are going through the same process. So we're very excited about it. I'll let you know how it keeps going, but really, really good start so far. I had mentioned, I think for the last two meetings, that we are continuing on with the deployment of purposeful exterior Wi-Fi at our branches. We were notified today that all of the facilities that we can get done are done, except for Sherwood. And we are working on Sherwood, no ETA yet. Some facilities, we can't make it happen at, like City of Fairfax, because of the parking garage, Kingstown, because we don't own the building and can't put devices on the outside. But the ones that we can do, Sherwood is our last remaining one, and they're hard at work trying to find the best solution for it. We had staff who've been testing it, and it's got really good range so far. And because we haven't been purposefully promoting it yet, it's really good Wi-Fi. And so people have found it and started hunkering down in parking lots. So it's been eventually, the plan is that we're going to have some marked parking spaces that'll identify where the best spot is to utilize that Wi-Fi. So you know that, like, this is the closest one to where the unit is on the outside of the building. But for now, it's kind of a free for all. It's it's nice. If you need some Wi-Fi, come to the library. It's Christine, six to ten, six A M. to ten P M.? Yes, good, six A M. to ten P M. on the days that we're on. So it's outside the range of our hours as well for folks who need it earlier or later in the day.
Do we have numbers on that? Do we? Can we get numbers on on the Wi-Fi outside of the facility?
Are you looking for number of users or the signal strength?
Number of user.
I can ask. I'm not sure. We've had some issues getting usership numbers on Wi-Fi in general, but I will double check because we don't maintain it. Another agency does. But I will ask and we will see what we get. Because all I have right now is anecdotal, and it's been good anecdotal. It's been people are outside. They aren't leaving trash everywhere. So.
It's good.
I have small victories. We'll we'll take it. We are continuing forward with our annual Comic-Con event. This will be our second annual virtual program. Normally, it's in person and it's really, really fun. There are many people in cosplay and developing their own comic books, and there's food trucks. Can't quite do that in a virtual setting, but we are giving it a good go. So in collaboration with the community cinema event that the foundation is doing, we're doing it on the same day, so it's Sunday, May eighth. And they have a virtual cosplay event that's being hosted by the Five O One Stormtrooper League. I might have a number on that wrong, but it is a fantastic league of folks that own their own stormtrooper costumes. So if you are a Star Wars, correct, Wars fan, it's it's a pretty fun one to watch. Some of our own staff participate as well, and they make their own costumes. So it's it's enjoyable and that's as well. At lunchtime, they're doing a fanfic food trivia program. So for many of us that Star Wars and Star Trek are not really my deal, but there's other wonderful kind of comic cinema things like the Marvel Universe. And there's food involved with those as well. So they're inviting people to participate, eat and partake of a kind of a bar pub style trivia event all about the food in the fandom universe. And the afternoon is a session with a comic book illustrator, the lady who wrote and illustrated Mooncakes, whose name is escaping me right now. It'll come back to me later at a random point in your meeting. But we're we're queuing all those up in the beginning of the day and then ending with the first Harry Potter movie, of which this year is the twenty-fifth anniversary. Thank you, Erin. Wendy Zoo is the illustrator of Mooncakes, who's going to be doing our our third session there. So should be a fun day, not just for kids, I promise. All ages are welcome to participate. So those were my add-on items. For my actual items in the report, you all have heard that our Dial Story program has launched, and I wanted to thank you all for everyone that was really interested in participating. I hope that you're having fun selecting your book and gearing up for the reading. We're switching out stories every other week, so even after you record, it might be a couple of months, maybe, before you hear your story on there, but we really appreciate it. So thank you. The Indie Author Project is live. It's open April and May. And Christine and I are actually, for our podcast next month, reading the winner of the twenty nineteen session who lives in Hampton Roads, Virginia, a book called Daywalker by Rand Ron Wilson, Daykeeper. Gosh darn it, so close. We were just talking about that today. So if you are a writer or you participate in any writing clubs, this is a wonderful opportunity to get your work out there and to engage around a community of indie writers. I see Sheila's hand up.
Question. You have to have a book. It's not just a short story. Is that what it is? That's what I was reading. It sounds like you have to have a complete.
It can be a short book, though. Like, it doesn't have to be three hundred chunky pages a book. It can be a short book.
Yeah, see, I write flash fiction, hundred page, thousand words or less. Yeah.
That is not quite the length that they're looking for.
Yeah.
But yours would be a great fit for our short story machine. So we'll have to come back around to to that one.
About that, yes.
Yeah, the short story machine, I think, is still either T J or George right now. So we'll we'll come back on that one. I also sent you some information about our library photographic archive. And this is the product itself. It's called Vital, but because nobody's going to know what that means, we're calling it a photo archive. Right now, there's only about twelve hundred photos that have been digitized and have the metadata attached to them. But we have, I don't even know how many hundreds of thousands of pictures hanging out in the Virginia Room Archives. The goal is that over time, we'll continue to add those in and build up those wonderful collections. They're they're really, I didn't grow up here, and it's been fascinating to look at these places that I know as a big old road. And then you look at it, and it it used to be a field with cows in it. So it's it's just really intriguing. So if you have some free time, there are some really cool pictures in there just to to peruse through. And then the last item on my list is a reminder that we have scheduled the naming ceremony for the conference room at John Marshall Library for Mr. Jasper. It is scheduled for Tuesday, May sixth, three P M. We have invited his family, and we know that a number of them are going to be able to. We have invited his family, and we know that a number of them are going to be able to attend, and we're thrilled they're going to be there. Chair McKay and Supervisor Lusk are both confirmed as well. So I think we'll have a nice little lineup of people. And for folks that aren't able to attend, we do have Channel sixteen confirmed. They will be coming up to tape. Excuse me. So we'll have something that you can take a look at next time, or you can always stop by the John Marshall Library and see the the plaque that's going to go up. Those are all of my items. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has. Oh, you are muted.
Unmute yourself, Suzanne. Suzanne, unmute.
I am. My picture moved. I, the board packet says it's Thursday at two P M. The Will Jasper thing, and I had written four P M. on my calendar. And you said three P M.
I had three.
Yeah, so that is that is my error, and I apologize. Staffs are going to be there at two P M. because we're setting up. The event is at three P M.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, you are welcome. My apologies for that.
And my my only question is that is a live event. Like, this is, I mean, we have to, this is an unusual thing. We go to J M. and see.
Yes, we're we're requesting R S V Ps to Bobby so that we can ensure that we're staying within meeting guidelines and limits. We are hoping to keep it at thirty or less. So right now, I think we're at about fifteen. Yeah.
Does he have, does Will, can I, can I go ahead? Does Will have a family that's taking up some of the?
Yeah, so his wife Darryl, I believe, still lives in the area. And his daughter, Nika, I'm not sure where she lives, but she's who we've been we've been working with. So she's sending out notification to the family, and they're letting us know how many folks they want to have attend. Yeah, they're they're nice. They're a nice crew. Phil.
Are you going to send something like like I had put on my calendar to attend? And I'm not sure that I acknowledge that to anybody. So if I tell you I it's on my calendar, I plan to attend, you can.
We will put you down on the R S V P.
Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Anybody else? No? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, the consideration item, the naming of a bench at the Oakton Library. So it's recommend recommendation to approve the request to name a bench at the Oakton Library in honor of Mrs. Charlotte Weinland. And if you notice on the item in the print version of there's a pic, there's a map on the back that shows where it's going to be and all that, a lot of details. So any questions on that? I don't think we need to read it, but be sure and read it before next time. Miriam?
So if it's if it's appropriate for me to just say this, this Linda Byrne is was the longtime administrative aide and office manager for Supervisor Linda Smith. So some of you might recognize her. She was there for a really long time, worked with Linda, and when Linda finally retired, as so did Lynn. When Linda Smith finally retired, so did Linda Byrne. Anyway, she reached out to me, and I reached out to Jessica. Her mother was really a long time. Well, you you can see the history here. Mother was very, very involved, and so she felt it would be meaning very meaningful to figure out a way to honor her mother and give back to the library in her memory. So I don't know if we discuss this more as an action item next week, but I just wanted to give you, okay, one minute of background. I'm done.
No, that's nice background. Phil.
I do not have an objection with it, but I'm asking have we done this type of thing before to like somebody that, you know, Will's case was a longtime trustee? So have we done this type of thing in the past? Do we have benches or things named for other people in other libraries?
I'm I'm going to say I'm going to answer yes, but I'm going to ask you to hold any, you know, for more of a discussion, we'll need to hold that for the action, once in action items. But yes, it's a it's a I don't want to know if I want to say standard, but it is. It's a thing that we do. So we could have further information on it next month. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? No? Okay, good. So now we are ready to move on to the action item of the bylaws. So I hope everyone has had a chance to read them. And I just want to say that one thing. The Sheila, if you remember, the the foundation representative had been a rep a representative. And then over the past few years, different chairs had not read the bylaws and had just simply appointed someone. So we're actually you know, and it was in the review of the bylaws where that information surfaced that, you know, we've been we'd been doing it incorrectly. So it it's we're honoring the way it was, the way it was as a representative.
Right.
So I will turn the chair over to you. I mean, not the chair, but Sheila, go ahead.
Okay. I was just, I was going to say two wording in the bylaws, we matched the wording in the foundation bylaws. So if something looks kind of funky, a word doesn't doesn't look you wonder what it is, we have used the same wording. So our change, our change is that it has been we we are going back to electing this representative, not appointing.
Okay, so I guess we're ready for a motion from Sheila.
So I move that the proposed changes to the bylaws be accepted.
You have a second.
By the board.
Brian, a second. Thank you. And discussion. And actually, from reviewing Robert's Rules of Order, the person who makes the motion has the option of being the first speaker. So Sheila, if you would like to speak, yeah, if you want to. It's your prerogative.
Right. We could do this two ways. We could go through article by article, or you I can just open it up to a discussion. And if anybody has any questions, I guess that board members can make one statement. Is that correct, using the by Robert's Rules, Fran?
That's that's right, in Robert's Rules, until until everyone who wants to speak has had a chance to speak.
Okay, okay. So are there any questions or discussion points?
I have a question.
Oh, good.
It seems to me that the changes that I saw were really mostly cleanup of language, tightening things up, making it clearer. It doesn't look like there was a lot of substantive change.
You're right. You're right. That's exactly what we did. It was we went, we went through it word by word. We changed words, wills to shells, shells to wills, where it was appropriate, clarified, tightened up the language and and made things clear. Yes, you're right. Sit out the.
And thank you for noticing. I think that's really it speaks well, it speaks well of the committee. And I want to say also that when we had when the committee had questions about issues, Christine was lucky enough to be in charge then and then lucky enough to have to follow through and get the answers. And so then for some of those, we did, we thought let's put them in there so that the next time this happens, those questions won't come up again. So, for example, what is the definition of an ex officio? And because I don't know if you remember, but we had this big discussion like, oh, they're the, yes, you're an ex officio member of the foundation, but you don't get to vote. Well, that's incorrect because ex officio means that you have the right to vote. So that's one example of besides the clarifying, it's sort of like, let's put in the things that we ask about so that we don't have to keep asking the same questions over and over.
Right. I think another clarification at the end in those footnotes was something that I didn't realize that we are appointed by our, those of us who who represent a district are appointed by the the Board of Supervisor of that dis district. But our appointment is then voted on by the entire board, and that was something that I think there were a lot of misconceptions about that. So I think that's that's another point that we clarify.
Right. And the city of Fairfax, the city of Fairfax is different.
Yes, right. Yes.
Okay, Brian, did you have a question or? No, I thought I said, okay. Anybody, Phil?
Phil, yes.
Is it appropriate to make a motion that we approve all of them at once instead of having, you know, since there are no questions, instead of having to go through all of them at one time, I would make that motion?
Well, that's the motion that's on the floor right now. That's what we're discussing. So we're good. We have that motion. Yeah. Thank you. So shall I call the question? I shall call the question. All those in favor of accepting the revised bylaws as presented tonight, please say aye. And all those opposed, please so indicate in the same way. Not in the same way, but saying, anyway, okay. It passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Great job to the committee. Appreciate it. Okay.
It really is. It was beautiful work, very tight.
Thanks.
Really well done.
Bylaws are, it's really important. They're really important. It's like the skeleton. What's how do things go? Okay, so now we have a new business item of expanded hours, and I'm actually not sure how to handle this. I think did Phil suggest this as a new business item? Does that mean then that he gets to lead the discussion of it, or he gets to make a presentation? But talk to us, Phil.
I can make it real brief. You know, we had before the virus, you know, had a whole program, Barry and the whole group did an awful lot of work. And with all this money pouring into the county, I would like us to pick up that where we were. And I guess it's too late for this period, but again, start this ball rolling again for the next round of budget. Or possibly, again, if it is not inappropriate, and and the rest of the trustees agree that as they get all this extra money poured in, you know, we ought to be there with, you know, pardon my expression, with our hand out saying, hey, guys, remember you were working on this? And this is what was done, you know, could you move some of that stimulus money to accomplish objective that you had agreed to support in the past? So that that's all I have to say on it.
Jessica.
So I would be happy to send the board some additional information about the American Recovery Plan Act. The stimulus money that is intended to come into the county, the two hundred and twenty-two million in the two different buckets has really specific guidelines for how it can be used. It is not money that the county can just take in and then kind of assign how they'd like. And libraries in the A R P A, P R A, whichever way that acronym flows, there are some really specific ways that that can be used for libraries if they chose to use it for that. So like the state is receiving some of this money, and they've been asking libraries in in Virginia within those parameters, how we might like to see it function. So it's meant to support things like expanded broadband and capacity for technology access. It's meant to expand workforce readiness.
Frozen. Ironic on the broadband.
Oh, can you hear me still?
Yes, now we can. We couldn't. You were frozen.
That's like a fun way.
Well, we'll appropriate some broadband money for you.
You know, I live in the boonies, so it's me and my my marginal connection. Anyways, there are some really specific areas that this can be used both by the county and in relation to libraries. So I'll send the board the overview that I got from the state, just so that you have that in your back pocket. That doesn't mean that you can't ask for money either through the next budget or however you want to do it. Just that the stimulus money itself has some some strings to it. So instead, you may look at, you know, if the county has that stimulus money to support one area of things, maybe it frees up money somewhere else.
So if I I just want to clarify for my own self, so the 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 state, so in the the state has money for these for library, for these, those two specific areas. And then how will the decision of allocation? Will it go to one of the richest counties in the state, or will it go other places?
No, so so my understanding, which I I feel pretty confident on, but I'll double check as well. Fairfax County is so large that similar to the CARES Act money, we were able to get a direct disbursement. Almost all the other jurisdictions, it may even be all the other ones in Virginia, have to get it through the state. The money comes to the state, and then the state spreads it out. But Fairfax, because we're we're so bulky, it's easier to give the money directly to the county than to to try and finesse it otherwise. The Library of Virginia, the money that I was identifying earlier is money that is coming through the Library Congress. So the the money is flowing differently through that. It's not the money that comes directly to the state that can gets distributed to counties.
Okay, so that that sort of information will be clarified in the information you send out, because that it's just hearing it is kind of I'm having trouble visualizing.
There's a lot of lines and
Yeah.
Yes, I will be happy to send something that is slightly more concise and comprehensive.
Okay, and then, well, okay, Sheila, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, and I think this is a really excellent proceed excellent pursuit to expanded hours, but since Sheila had begun it and had done such a great job at the beginning, I guess it's too late to begin to work to get this into the the next, the twenty twenty, twenty, the twenty-two budget. But can we start up again and be prepared for when when it is the money will be available when we go back to some sort of normalcy in the county?
Yeah, the the timing is all up to you all. Just just remember that we as staff start working on the next fiscal year budget usually in September, like late August, September, and it's submitted in October.
Right, but we but we don't even know at this point, the library is still basically closed, and schools are open, close, open, close. You know, there's not much. If there's not much. I don't know. We have, we have no date for when things will really open up. I mean, we're hoping, but we don't do it any more than hoping.
Yeah, our libraries are reopened for express interior services, the same that we work from June through January. But we're back not back to normal yet. That's correct.
But if we start, if we start preparing with Sheila again, we'll be ready. So it's just, as I guess I'm asking a question more than than making a recommendation.
Well, what 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 I wonder about is that we have, you know, that was a proposal that was submitted and approved. So would there be the process then of like updating that plan with current fiscal information and submitting it again?
Yeah. So if I, Fran?
Yeah.
So so just following up on both what you both said, there were kind of two pieces to this, if you remember.
Yeah.
First piece was Jessica as the library, and then with our with the board's approval, submitted that phased approach, asking for a specific amount of money.
Exactly.
Then as as part of the budget process, but not as part of her budgets. And she's, she's told exactly what to get as part of the budget. And then and then so that was like whatever, September, October, but then Sheila started more in the winter, spring, working before the budget was actually announced, working towards this campaign, which was either going to be hooray, you approved it now, keep on going, you know, everybody, supervisors, how much we love you, or it was going to be what's the matter with you? You should have put this in the budget. Go put it in the budget now. And if you remember, it got approved and everybody bought it, and then we all went home. And and then left our houses again. And so the question really is whether or not I think if we, you know, following that same pattern to reengage Sheila is really to reengage the community. And when you reengage the community, you need to know what message it is that you want to be sending. So we're really at this first part, which is does Jessica, does the administration think that at the point in time in which they're going to submit their regular budget, would it be appropriate, would it be received well for us, for her to put in this, you know, hey, remember us, here's our phased approach?
Yeah, that's what.
Which we really won't know. You know, the, I mean, I would say that if, you know, by summertime, if things are open, people are vaccinated, and really feels, it's going to be a feeling, right? Does it feel more normal? Then we should maybe as a board, you know, can talk about her putting together the phased approach to put in there. It may well be that things are more normal in September, but it's so obvious that the county is going to be spending all their money trying to get all the kids back up to where they need to be. Hey, you know, doing the merit increases that everybody forewent, that it's not worth our time and energy following so. So it's a great idea. I know Jessica's already thinking about it because she sent us that email of trying to shift hours around within the budget that we have. And it's just an open question in the next few months whether she And it's just an open question in the next few months, whether she would recommend to us that this is the time to move forward, or should we really wait a whole nother cycle?
And along with that, what I'm focusing in on my remarks is um how much um the community utilized the services that we had. I wanna stress um how much uh how much a part of, um, how much the people needed us. Um, you know, with examples of the increases in the ebook usage, um, the increase of the virtual story hours, all the different things that have been done. Um, because one of the statistics that Aaron provided was that um our ebook circulation were one of the top twenty-five in the world of circulation. I mean, and that's astonishing, if I have that right, I think I do. Um, uh, and, and the experiences that we all know that, that happened in our branches. So I wanna start, you know, it's not, not exactly campaigning, but you know, okay, here's what, here's what went on when we had nothing new, um, and how we adapted and how much um everybody appreciated. So I think, I, I, I think you're absolutely right, Miriam. And I think then we, with an advocacy campaign, we would rethink a little bit of our of our strategy for each of us to be talking to our supervisors.
Right, right.
Uh Sheila?
Yeah, I just would like to add that there has been, there have been articles written in, in newspapers, magazines, various places where the library has stepped up and fulfilled roles that other agencies weren't able to, you know, and I've, I've been just kind of collecting them in a, in a casual way, but um, I think that it would be a great time to collect some of these, these um these holes that we have felt, you know, using the light, like the broadband is a good example of it. And um, you know, we homeschoolers using the library, putting holes on books that they need, that they can't just walk into the, you know, I mean, there, there've been a lot of different places where the, the community has used us. And um I think that it would be a good time to start collecting some of these. And maybe the ebook um committee will, will be a good place to get some real hard facts down to show the worth of the library and, and the advocacy necessary to go to the, to the Board of Supervisors. So that's what I have to say.
So anyone else um have thoughts? So how are we leaving it? Um Jessica's gonna send us information, more specific information about, about the money that we'll be getting because yeah, it's, it's earmarked, if you will. Yeah.
We'll be happy to do that.
Okay, great. Um, and then you know, it, it seems we're sort of on the same page of um, as, of Miriam with the kind of get re- be getting ready, but wait and see um how things are looking. Um, and I, and I'm glad, Phil, I'm glad you brought this up for discussion. Do you have anything you wanna add?
And the only thing I'm, I'm gonna say is, I think it's great that we emphasize and it, it's very important how we filled in during this period of time. The only danger possibly is if I'm a supervisor sitting back and during the pandemic, everybody was using, you know, uh, the internet and everything else, then, you know, I could not simply say, well, why do we need expanded hours? So I, I would only think about what I'm saying to you, you know what I'm saying? I, when I read some of the statistics, I was amazed at like how much we filled in. You know, if, if there were some human interest stories about, you know, somebody cooped up and, you know, how they utilized, you know, that would maybe be a little better than emphasizing so much all the numbers, because then they could say, why do we need expanded hours? If people can use other sources to access the library, so.
Well, one of the things I thought I would do is like, uh, I was sort of like, uh, how much they, they loved us and then how angry they got. I, I mean, it's, it's sort of a negative thing, but I think it might be, I think it's important for the board to know that people were angry when we opened, that they couldn't spend more than thirty minutes, that they couldn't have their living room setting where they could come in and look at the newspapers and the magazines all morning. Um, because I'm thinking the same thing as you, Phil, and that the physical aspect of it. And, and with the grab and go, I, I'm gonna mention, you know, the guy that threw the p- through the table. But then I'm also gonna say how, you know, we had the um, the Staff Excellence Awards and some, you know, over a hundred nominations of the services that our staff provided, um, including, you know. So I would do the balanced picture of, of all of that. And I, I thought, I, well, I wanna know what you guys think, but I thought a long time about, do I really wanna say how angry people got? But to me, it's like an indicative uh thing of they want us, they wanna come in and they wanna be there. So anyway. Yeah, so uh, so my overall feeling is that we do wanna, um, it's almost like the back burner, but get it, being ready, getting, getting ourselves ready, um, so that, you know, because they were, and I've shared this story, but at the budget hearing right before everything fell apart, um, a- at the Mason District one, and I had the, the commit- the Sheila Committee made those thank you signs to hold up at those, remember, I'm looking at Jane, remember those? Yeah, they were really cool. And I held that up and um, the county executive, you know, mouth the words, you're welcome. You know, I think they really wanted to do that, and I think we can get that goodwill back again. Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you very much. Um, and now we're ready for the roundtable. So do you want me to call on you again, or do you wanna just? Just blurt it out, just be.
I'll start if you want.
Okay.
Braddock District, I, I don't have a whole lot to say, except that the public does seem very pleased that the libraries are opening to some extent, and they look forward to uh, to uh more hours. Uh, also, the uh friends groups are starting to look ahead to when they actually can do book sales, and I think uh, so we'll see, you know, that's it.
Jump in. Okay, Sheila, I'll call on people.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, Phil.
Uh, again, I wanna may thank Jesse and the staff, well, again, however it came that they were open. I was at the library uh early Saturday morning, and there were people kinda lining up to, not a lot, but people were there right at ten o'clock when it opened, so.
I'm looking forward to doing the storytime reading, so that will be fun.
Yeah, well, um, Sujata?
Um, I'm also looking forward to doing storytime, or reading one of my favorites, The Napping House, which I requested and found on my shelf. Um, I love reading The Napping House to kids. And also, I wanted to let you guys know that I listened to your podcast, you and Christine. It was, it was so fun. It was the, um, I sc- I scrolled through to find that there was a book that I read, because I was afraid, I'm always afraid of spoilers. And um, and in fact, I think they said that, something like, they warned me. So I went and read that, I listened to the Jeeves one, because I'm a PG Wodehouse fan, and I think they're sort of funny. I mean, I mean, you know, Jessica, they're, you have to admit, it's funny. Anyway.
I don't have to admit anything.
You would, you already have. Jessica, you already have admitted they were funny. You clearly enjoyed it. I am not hearing anything else. So I listened to, during pandemic, actually, I listened to quite a bit, I listened to almost all the Jeeves, I think, and uh, just for fun. And it, it was really quite delightful, but I have to wait and pick one, because I didn't find another one that I had read. And you clearly give spoilers, so I have to pick one, read it, and then listen to that. But they are really very well done.
You need to pick one of my books next. They're the good ones.
I will, you know what I'll do? I'll email you and the kind, it's, cuz I, it's not like I'm averse to sci-fi, meaning like I read the game, Game of Thrones, that, that, that was good. So like, I'll ask you, what will I like? And I'll go read. I think I'm much more along the lines of what Christina likes. I don't know, but I liked Jeeves, so. Anyway, it was fun. I highly.
Okay, Suzanne?
Um, I just wanted to say, I, I now at the point where I'm comfortable going into the library again, and I'm going inside to pick up my old books and drop off things I collect for the Virginia Room. And I was in today, and the branch manager Laura told me that five of her staff got um their uh vaccines today. It was a, uh, I think she had four in the morning and one in the afternoon. So the staff is really excited to be back to finally be vaccinated and on the way to hopefully full immunity.
Great. Priscilla?
Thanks. Um, I too am excited about the Diala Story opportunity. And um I also wanted to give a shout out to who is running the social media for the Fairfax County Public Library Twitter account. It has been on fire with um promoting all kinds of really intriguing and interesting uh programming. And um I run the um Public School Library Twitter accounts. I'm always looking for things to retweet and feels like I'm doing public library uh a lot lately. So shout out, because I know that that takes a, a lot of foresight and thought and um uh that there's consistency that has to be behind that. So congrats for that. I'm excited to be part of the ebook. Committee, because it's also a question, it, it's even more restrictive for schools than it is for public libraries as far as what we are allowed to share with our students. Um, even if we wanna purchase it, we may not be able to, and I'm not allowed to purchase anything that can be shared um across um with a multi-user license, because I'm a central office account. So I feel like this is going to be very, very helpful for us. Just as a bit of trivia, um, last year at this time, we had about seventy-four thousand engagements with our ebooks and our students. We've gone up about eighty-six percent. I just checked during National Library Week, we have five hundred and thirty-four thousand engagements with our ebooks from our students. So um it's worth our investment, and I think collectively, public library, school library, working together, perhaps to have a legislative um outcome, I think would be very worthy of our time. So thank you for thinking of me to be a part of that committee.
Thank you. Okay, Gary, how about you?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Jane?
I don't really have anything, although I'm wondering if anybody in this meeting owns their own stormtrooper costume.
Or we'll admit it, no.
Christine?
Uh Keith?
Yeah, I just wanna mention that um over at Richard Bird, I, I think they're having a, a successful um, and I don't know if this is public knowledge, but the, the COVID testing center outside there, um, it's been very effective. Every time I've gone over there, I've seen folks uh getting tested, so um and I talked to Valerie, the branch manager over there, and she just said that it's been fairly successful. So I think that that's a, a nice value for the community over there. Um, and so whoever's responsible for that, I wanna say thank you.
Um, from Mason District, um Marie Kavanaugh and I um shared a, a display case and um, we are displaying our collection of um little boxes that we collect and pick up when we travel places or the, or at antique stores and stuff like that. So if you're way down here in Mason District, you can stop in and take a look at it. And uh, I thought of things as everybody was talking, but lucky for you, I've forgotten them now. So I think that's it. Okay, I think we are ready for a, an adjournment.
I move, we adjourn.
Thank you, Phil. Do we have a second?
I second. Priscilla?
Thank you, Priscilla. And uh all those in favor, say aye, put your hand. The motion is carried, so uh, the meeting is now adjourned until, well, it's no, it's adjourned. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.